Good evening everyone, I've called order this evening's city commission meeting September 25th, 2025. If you'll please rise for the flag salute.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States. To the great which stands on the nation, on the ground, invisible, whoever seen it, justice for all.
It's my fourth one of these this week.
Wow, thank you. Roll call Cindy, please.
Commissioner Langrath?
Here.
Commissioner Mento?
Here.
Mayor Kribel?
Here. The open public meeting announcement pursuant to the open public meeting act adequate notice of this meeting has been provided. The agenda for this meeting is posted in city hall and on the city's website, www.vendercity.org. Next, the live streaming announcement, the city vendor offers live streaming and the option of public comment via remote access as a convenience to the public. In the event remote access is unavailable for any reason beyond the city's control, the city will not pause or stop the live meeting. The city reserves the right to discontinue remote access at the discretion of the city for any future meetings. Right. This evening we have no presentation and we will. Few actions, we will approve the minutes of August 14th. Regular session, August 14th executive session, August, September 11th regular and September 11th executive. Any questions there?
Just one thing, the redevelopment plan, they're, the applicant thought that was going to be on for tonight. It's not going to be, it's going to be at our next meeting. I don't know if they noticed for that. So just an announcement that the redevelopment resolution, I guess, that we would have adopted would be at our next meeting, which is the October 9th.
Right.
So Jack asked me to make that announcement and we'll just carry it till then.
Great.
Did they come back to the planning?
Not yet. They won't come back until after we take action.
Lance, was it noticed for this meeting? So it doesn't have to be re-noticed?
He may have. That's why I just made that announcement in case someone was here for that. Carry to the October 9th board meeting, city commission meeting, excuse me.
So there would be no discussion or announcement of the, on the redevelopment for this evening, correct? Thank you. Yeah, there was some confusion about.
Well, Mike Floyd, our attorney, his mother passed this week.
I see.
So there's been, Mike Floyd's mother passed, so he's was kind of preoccupied with dealing with family matters, so.
No question. So, thank you. So moving forward, we will have no public hearings or adoptions, but we do have a number of resolutions, including a number of four we will be adding on the bench.
Ordinance introduction.
We do have an ordinance introduction? Oh, I'm sorry. I went down too fast here. We do have an ordinance introduction. Ordinance 2025-020, adopting chapter 204, the code of city of vendor entitled taxation, establishing the five-year exception of the abatement program. So this is continuing the existing abatement program as it exists.
Re-adopting.
Re-adopting it. Any questions on that?
No.
It's been pop.
Very successful. There's quite a few of them here tonight and.
Yeah. I think it's something that has proven itself as a, as a great tool for the city. Thank you. Number nine, we don't have any public hearings or adoptions. Catching up. Number 10, resolutions, we have resolutions 297 through 308 and we are adding 309 through 312 on the bench today. So starting with 297, this is supporting knockout opiate abuse day. This is a. This is recognizing a. The opioid issue in the country and recognizing that day formally. Then we have the prevention, obviously. Resolution 298 is a public works. Do you want to pick on that stormwater assets for the city vendor? It's a mapping.
Yes. So this is update our maps for stormwater outfalls throughout the city. We get some funding for it as well, but I think this is being tied to Remington Vernick for them to map the outfalls, make sure we know where they are. And if they do not have, I call them duck, duck valves or flapper valves on them to keep the title from tides from coming in. They'll note that, but we'll, we'll get a GIS map from that, that product, so.
So it's a first step in upgrading any of those.
It's updating it, yeah. We have existing maps, but they're pretty old. I think I may have worked on the last ones. That's how old they are. So that was a long time ago.
Yeah. So the, and then 299, the next resolution is tied to that as well. That's inventory. Both are, both have not to exceed numbers on them.
Yeah, this is a watershed improvement plan through Ernie and our water department, city streets department really. So it's watershed management ties to the other one as well. You're right.
Okay, great. D, resolution 300, this is authorizing two part-time traffic guards. So we have two new guards starting September 23rd, I believe. And then resolutions 301 through 307 are all tax abatements. I'll leave those for the record and the addresses are in the resolutions. They'll be by consent, but they are all tax abatement resolutions. As we said, it's a very successful program and is a benefit to the city. Two, next, that would bring us to.
308.
308, which is a large resolution here. Do you want to speak on this? The sandblasting of North Surrey Avenue Water Tower.
Yeah, it's not just sandblasting, it's painting, some refurbishment of the water tower over on North Surrey Avenue. We got three bids in, the high was 1.7 plus million dollars. The low was just under a million, 997, 997,000. We're going to award to Dynamic Sand Blasting and Painting LLC for that work. So we're going to also, that color will change. We will have to decide on it. Ernie's been pushing us to lighten that color. The darkness of that green actually causes the water temperature to heat up and it makes it harder to maintain good quality water in that water tower. So we're going to look for a lighter color. That's why all the other colors are very similar.
Light blue.
A light blue and we'll have to come up with, if we're going to keep surely the best or come something different on there.
Right.
We should discuss that.
Okay, great.
If you want to see how that's done, go over to Brigantine, they're doing theirs right now. They draped the whole thing and shrouded it and then power the sandblast it and then repaint everything.
Everyone had done the last time to get that green turquoisey blue on there.
Yep.
It's a big, it's a long process. I remember it last.
Sandblasting, it's not going to be quiet. You're going to have machinery operating.
Impressors.
A while, weeks or?
Month plus, yeah.
Long time.
Every day.
We'll put out a notice or something.
Not a bad idea. But again, a notice. So that is 308, it is a large contract and we did get the best bid available.
If I can just jump in real quickly, I think it's also substantially below what we estimated today.
You thought it was even closer than two.
It'll be financed through the, the I bank, so we'll get very favorable terms there.
Get some grant money for this too? Did we get some grant money for this too?
Got I bank.
We get the I bank, yeah. So, you know, part of that is free money and then part of it's a low interest.
Right. All right. So next item would be approvals of bills and payroll. I don't have any discussion items.
We're adding these.
I'm sorry, we are adding. Yes, we are adding four on the bench. 309 is fleet maintenance purchase. These are vehicles for the police department, right? Replacing older vehicles, which we are getting some money for, but not, not a lot. 310 is awarding Polistina Associates Construction Management for Venter Gardens Plaza Storm Sewer Repair Project. So is that the pump station there or is that?
It's all tied to that. Yeah, it's the, just going through it. Ed sent it over to me that it's, there's an increase in $12,000 in inspections.
Right.
Not to exceed, increase of 12,000, so not to exceed 66 to 25.
This is actually a change order.
Yeah.
A change order.
A project that's basically wrapped up.
Okay, great.
And that seems to be working. When we get to heavy rains, it seems to be getting the water into the system and out through the bay. Now the next project will be new pumps or an upgrade to the pumps at the end of that street.
And to refresh your memory, we will be submitting an invoice to the city of Margie for their share of this project. I think they're on the hook for 35%, I think.
It's, it's under 40, it's around that, yep.
Okay, great. I think that's enough color for that. Next is 311, this is appointing lifeguard pension commission pursuant to NJ SA 34 debt, colon 13-28. So this is bringing that pension back into compliance. I appreciate the volunteers that stepped up. Matthew Spears is an existing lifeguard, Jackie Fox, a member of, will be a member of the citizens, citizen member of the commission. And Sean Gleason also will be a member of the citizen commission. That rounds out our.
And right, and once this commission is, is back to being a functioning body, we'll be amending the existing plan for their approval. And then ultimately, I guess we'll submit it to the state comptroller's office to make sure that it complies with the audit that they did. So I, I've been working on that draft for their consideration and we'll probably have that finished next week. So that we can, you know, get this thing moving and submit our corrective action plan to the state by the middle of October.
Okay.
And ultimately it's going to come back here for you to adopt the new plan by ordinance.
Great, great. Thank you. Thanks for your work on that. And then lastly, the 312 is another, another public works. Do you want to put some color on to that Cambridge Avenue Bulkhead?
Yes, that bulkhead needs to be replaced. We tried to squeeze it into the Winchester Avenue project that finished up this spring. But we just really couldn't do that. It's better to do a standalone project. It's Cambridge Avenue Bulkhead End, Street End at, well, Cambridge Avenue in the Bay. So it's in fairly really poor condition. So Arthur Chu came back with the best estimate for that and he's in, he's in our pool of engineers.
Great.
So he does a good job with the bulkheads.
Great. And that finishes our resolutions.
Resolutions.
Okay, so then we will have approval of bills and payroll and I have no discussion items that I'm aware of. Anyone, anyone submitted any? No? At this point, do we have any public, we can open the floor for public portion for any items that have been discussed so far? Have a motion to open for public portion.
So moved.
Second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Langrath?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes. So any, no one here in the, in the chambers, is there anyone on Zoom platform that wishes to discuss anything in the agenda that we've discussed so far? There will be time to discuss any general items at the end of the agenda.
Yeah, anybody on Zoom wish to comment on any of the items that have been spoken about so far?
Mrs. Hand, nothing from you?
Mrs. Hand? She's our clerk, who's out with her laptop in bed.
Just send me a picture of her toes or.
Oh boy. All right. Miss you, miss, best wishes to you Lisa.
Get well soon.
Get well soon. Can I have a motion to close the workshop portion of the public?
So moved.
Roll call Cindy?
Commissioner Langrath?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes. Can I have a call to order, the regular portion of the meeting? And our first item would be approval of minutes, August 14th, regular, August 14th executive, September 11th regular and September 11th executive. May I motion to approve those minutes?
I'll make that motion.
Roll call Cindy?
Commissioner Langrath?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes. Can I have a motion to introduce ordinance 020 readoption of chapter 204 as described?
I'll make that motion.
Kind of a roll call Cindy?
Commissioner Langrath?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento? Mayor Kribel?
Yes. Moving on past public hearing and ordinance adoption, may I have a motion to adopt resolutions 297 through 23, 2312? As described in the consent agenda.
I'll make that motion to adopt resolutions 2025-297 through 312.
Second.
I have a roll call Cindy?
Commissioner Langrath?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes. Can I have approval of bills, a motion to approve bills and payroll?
Need to hear.
Can I have it here with the, who's discussing bills and payroll?
I can read them, yeah. It's fine.
Thank you.
Okay, from August 31st to September 13th, it is 716,789,46 cents. And the amount for bills is 2,340,394,87 cents.
Thank you. I motion to approve bills and payroll.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call Cindy?
Commissioner Langrath?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes. Seeing those safety reports or announcements, any commissioner reports? Commissioner Langrath, you want to start?
Yeah, I've got a few, yeah. One that's kind of gross. We've, we've deployed a, Mike, I gotta read how it. Microbial treatments within our sewer system. So what Ernie has been doing over the last few months is in certain sections where we, we have a lot of backups. For whatever reason, volume, clogs, whatever, we've instituted this micro, microbial, basically bugs, bacteria into the system and it actually eats up that stuff and it's working. We actually cleared it with the county because it ends up, everything ends up in the county wastewater treatment facility. And it seems to, they're called, let's see, inoculates main sewer lines with bioengineered organisms that eat solids lining sewer lines such as fats, oils and grease. Hope everyone ate dinner.
So yeah, so it's like.
Yeah, it's an eco-friendly ACU approved solution to address routine and responsive maintenance of our sewer mains. Organisms also provide additional odor control by absorbing a portion of the hydrogen sulfide odors that it sometimes escape into the air. Maria's very well aware of that. Started a test period by inoculating the Canal Harvard Fulton Pump Station, Wellington Avenue in Dorset, Maine and 12 other high-volume manhole locations on Venter Avenue in the business districts. It's proven to be successful, started in April of this year. We've authorized 9,200 hours to be spent to date. And we'll be presenting a request to continue the program in the near future. So it's, it's starting to, they're seeing fewer responses in those areas from clogs.
Really?
So.
It's like Activia for the city. It's like gut health for the city. Sorry.
It's just a solution they pour into the manholes. Yep. Yep. So that's the, that's the exciting sewer news in September.
Unless I want to comment.
Exactly. Just a couple of things cleaning up from, from the summer and thanks Rick for the report and, and thanks for the other one as well from, from both Ernie and Rick. We're pulling up all our beach mats. They'll all be removed by the end of September, trash cans, what, ones we have left because we lost quite a few from Hurricane Erin. Boardwalk shower removal by, by October 1st, the restroom winterization by November 1st. So those will be open until November up on the pier and around town. We've put a PO out for the pier and court, on the tennis court restroom signage. Been waiting for that for a little while. If you've been out by Titus Field, Sandy Vesprino has finished the brickwork out there. There's a couple of things left to be done. There's a plaque that he's working on to thank the folks that really started the recreation facility out there. He's working with that, with some of the, the older folks that were around during that time. Some of them are still here, most of them are not. There's also those bees that I talked about in our last couple of times before, they're, they're on order along with the plaque. That's kind of it. Everything else is, so Pier Masters are still working with heavy fishing volume like another week or two.
That's true.
Yeah, I think the, the spots ran long, although it was empty this morning.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we'll see how long we keep the, the Pier Masters up there, but we typically keep them up there till the third week in October. So, all right, that's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Mento, you have anything coming up?
Still implementing a new payroll system and it's coming along. I think we're going to be live shortly. But I, Amy and I did talk today, I said, don't rush it. If there's any little thing in there, you're not 100%. Just take more time. So that's that. Pax and Assessor, it's business as usual. We have some events coming up. The Sunday is Manja Manja, the pasta dinner at Red Room. Please pay attention to Facebook in case we have to cancel due to rain. It will be the next Sunday if that occurs.
Is there going to be a TV there?
Oh, right.
We schedule this on Eagles Sunday.
There's going to be a lot of people looking at their phone. While they eat.
I may be giving out my ticket to somebody so that someone else can go.
October 19th is Eagles tailgate in conjunction with the BBA at Ski Beach, 11 a.m. pregame, 1 p.m. game. October 26th is our Halloween Fest at Ski Beach, 11 a.m. to 3 p.m. And then that takes in December and because they're such magnificent events, I'm going to mention them even though we have another month. So December 5th, 6th, 7th is parade weekend. We have the tree lighting on December 5th. And we are honored to have, make an appearance, probably their first appearance is the Margie Community Church bell choir. And they are amazing, amazing, amazing. The 6th is our parade and the 7th, there's events for families. At, I think at, we do an ice cream and a couple of other things, but we have it all posted.
Yep.
And look for the information.
One other thing, Rick, Rick's got something there.
October 4th is our second shredding textile collection event.
Yeah.
Right.
On that Ski Beach.
And yeah, shredding and textile, so, so materials, clothing.
Clothing, flip flops, old luggage.
Yep, thank you.
Old luggage?
Stuff that we go in landfills, repurpose it there and shred it. We thought adding one at the end of the summer, special events committee thought adding it at the end of the summer was prudent. A lot of people clean their houses out after the summer. We wanted to capture that stuff from going out to the landfill.
Yeah, and we moved that from Newport to Ski Beach.
Yes.
As we did the first one. So thank you. I should have had that on here, but I didn't. December 10th is our New York City bus trip. It's Christmas spectacular and I believe there, there's two buses going up and I believe there's still some open seating. December 15th is the city hall menorah lighting and that's always very, very nice. And then December 19th, Santa on the fire truck, which I love. And that's, that's it for now. Oh, Wounded Warrior. We, we honored the Wounded Warrior on September 17th. It rained, so there was no parade. And we, we went to Longport City Hall and met Chase Tantum and his family. He had five children.
Big family.
Big family, lovely family. It was emotional. I felt I was emotional, getting emotional just thinking about it. And a lot of people showed up and they did a little barbecue for, for them. And it was just really a nice hometown event and I hope they had a great time in our three cities and they left here on Tuesday.
Yep, really nice.
Thanks.
Yeah, and the voting for Best of the Press, Best Beach, Best Concert Venue, Library and Pickleball Court ended yesterday. So keep your fingers crossed.
Get all those emails anymore and the texts now to vote for everybody.
Great, thank you. I'll just follow with the, we, I have been to the, the Titus Field, that sign that is being finished is looking great. Viking Rowing Club received a donation from the Pluti family for, after the Beach Patrol Hall of Fame and event of a new rowing shell from the Pluti family and be named after, it's a brand new Vespoli 8, which we're putting to good use this fall head race season. The lifeguards will have an update. They don't have it yet, but at the next meeting I'll have an update of their, they had a very busy summer. And as always, really, you know, reflected the city in a, in a positive way. I think then, you know, the new chiefs had got some great programs going. His, his, his team seems to really be gelling over there. So I'll have those, those, those numbers for you at the next meeting. And then I'll just comment briefly, I want to thank Rick for meeting me on, on site, doing a couple of walkthroughs now for tree plantings. We did a, we have a grant for a tree inventory that we're now, we coordinated with the arborist and, and the plant and the contract that we have with Bayview to do the planning so that they'll, there will be, they'll do the inventory after this planning group is done. But we'll have somewhere in the neighborhood of 30 trees or so going in to sort of make the, the tree planting symmetrical. And new, he'll also be upgrading the, the, the planting areas around each tree so that they'll have a small curb and, and native species plants around it. It'll all be, he's also, part of his contract is to water them for 20, for 12 months so that they take hold and they'll go into dormancy through October. So I have a, I have a, this has been a long time chasing this, but we'll have them in by October, planted and dormant throughout the winter. And then we should have a really nice attractive group of planting from, from, all the way from the edge of, I guess, Nashville Market, all the way to the end of that district and then picking up again in, around the Dunkin' Donuts, all the way to Detroit Avenue School. And then two more late entries at the Sundays and Tanning Salon Block on that block. So it'll all be kind, it'll be a big, it'll be a big improvement and they're all going to be species that are approved and list by the, the hard work that the green team did. So there's been a lot of coordination for, for something like this and in the long run, I think it's going to be something I think we can all be proud of.
Mentioned something too. You reminded me of, on Dorset Avenue, the businesses that have embraced our containers, flowers. Planters, they're beautiful, they're flowers.
Yep, yeah, nice.
Yeah, they really took care of them and.
One of the things, following, following up on that, I have Vasprino to kind of talk to the business owners that a lot of those other ones that are not so well maintained, not just on Dorset. That if they're going to stay there, they're going to have to maintain them. If not, we're going to remove them. And even the areas that have the trees in them, once that goes in, they're supposed to maintain, like if they have little plants in the bottom of them or whatever, the grass in the sidewalk. All notices are going to go out for those, to talk to those property owners. We'll take care of the curb side, you know, inside the road from the curb out in. But from the curb to the properties is the property owner's responsibility. So they'll be getting some polite notices. Just not really, even warning letters, just a letter going out saying, hey guys, remind you to, to trim these, this grass up and now's a good time to start it.
I, I mean, I think it's better than when you guys first came into office.
Yeah.
But it still needs improvement.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What do you call them, whiskers or whiskers? Public Works guys call them whiskers because they look like little.
And they come up through the cracks.
Yeah.
The weeds.
Yeah, whiskers. There's something else that we did notice that is apparent. There are so many plaques, memorial plaques around. Some of them are just overgrown. Families must have donated these plaques many years ago. So we have a couple that came off the street. So one of the things would be also for us to maybe refurbish these, at least, you know, sandblast them and just put a coat of paint on them so they're presentable. But they're very dated and they've been in, in these tree pits for a long time and, you know, just neglected for whatever reason. So that's another thing. We'll have an inventory of where every marker is, at what street, in front of what address. And then we're going to have one of the guys come through and just, you know, pull it, strip it of the paint that's there and just put proper paint on it so they're at least visible. But we have a lot, there's a lot of those memorial plaques around.
Yeah, when Rick and I were out with the contractor, we did make a point to go to, and we actually ran into some of the restaurant owners and business owners to tell them what was in the works, to let them know that, you know, that they were, that some of them were happy to see it because there are some trees that were literally just hanging on by a thread. And then we did, I will just say to the point of Lance, you pointed out in the, that they're maintained. Vince's barber shop was actually, was actually out there putting, putting new plants into his space. So we didn't have the, I kind of didn't have the heart to say we're going to tear out your rose bush that he really was taking, really, really taking care of his place off. So he'll, he's going to have a little bit, he's not, he's a serious gardener and he really, really was, you could just tell he was not, he was there, he was there taking care of his. Yeah, I think there were some tomato plants in there too, somewhere. It was like a 12, it was like a two foot square.
And I, I think we do need to be careful to notify the people where you're doing these plantings and where you're doing a 12-month deal for maintenance and watering. If we're planting native plants, you don't want these. If we're planting native plants, you don't want these people going out thinking they're weeds and pulling them out. So, so we need to educate everybody as to what they can and can't do in terms of maintaining.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be.
They look like a weed to you, but we planted it as a native species and leave it alone.
I agree. Some of those grasses do look like they're, they do look like weeds, but they're not. And so I think there's some, they're, they're going to have some color to them, some are not, but the, the trees themselves are.
Depends on the season, right? In the spring, they may not look like much, but by August, they're beautiful.
Yeah. Yeah. And I think he said two-inch diameter?
Two-inch by down.
Trees. So that's a good.